Notes here and Black on Thompson here. Elkin.
Here.
Manor.
Here.
Blanum here.
All right, thank you. Um, beginning with the department reports, Patty.
Hello, everybody. Um, I first want to give you a report on our tap grant that we received. Uh, we were approved for the Hillcrest Drive corridor safety improvements through a grant that I applied for. Uh, that's to include sidewalks and crosswalks. Uh, the area will extend along Hillcrest and a portion of Minneapolis by the schools. Uh, the project federal award limit is three hundred thirty-two thousand seven thirteen sixty. Uh, we have four years to complete the project after the awards. We just got the award. Um, that's a safe routes to school plan that we have in place currently. And we're working closely together with all of you and the community and other people to help us implement the project. So we'll have more discussion further down the road. So. Um, EV charging stations, I heard that the cabinets are in place. But we don't have a ribbon cutting yet, so we're still working on that. We're having a sign built. And a crew will install it. It's a pretty nice sign, and that's being paid for through Excel Energy. Um, restaurants that they're in place, and they should be up and running in the near future. So I think they're almost done with all the electric and plumbing for that. So, uh, sewer rate increase. Um, we are increasing our rates, as you know. Uh, we're going to hold off till next quarter to implement that, and we'll send out notices and do all the good business behind that. Um, if you hadn't heard, if the public hadn't heard, uh, their increase for two thousand twenty-three is thirty-three point five percent. It's going to help with the wastewater treatment plant costs. And the increase for two thousand twenty-four through two thousand twenty-six will be eight point five percent. So the, the, it'll be a lower price for that. And then we're going to have staggered increases again in two thousand twenty-eight and two thousand thirty-one, and that's three percent. So there will be no increase in twenty-seven, twenty-nine, and thirty. So that's where we're at on that. Um, airport, uh, there's been a few interested individuals looking at lots for hangers. Uh, there has not been a recent airport commission meeting. However, I am scheduling one for August tenth, and we will go over the plan with that. So we're going to start working on the master plan. So that'll be good. Um, they're starting a crack ceiling project that was approved, and that's one point seven million to get that done, but we don't have to pay all that. So we pay a small portion of that. Um, cap and improvement plan, uh, myself along with the staff and the department heads are still working on that plan for the city. And it's for five years, and that should help us with the future budget planning as well. So. Um, electronic sign that's coming in on Friday. And I've got a meeting with the sign committee next Monday to discuss the fundamentals of who will input into the sign, donor recognition, as well as who was donated and what the budget is to date. So. We will also make a plan for the bylaws of the organization and put pen to paper as to what is expected and the documentation of the sign in its future operation. Um, emergency issues, uh, myself, Ben Jansen, Taylor, Larson, Jeff Mahoney, Jeremy Woods, and Polk County Emergency Ma- Management Staff met for an after-action meeting on July sixth to discuss the Amory Water Boil Water Event that took place June fifteenth through the seventeenth. Uh, we did identify what went well and what needs further investigation and improvement. Uh, Polk County offers a code red county asset that the city will look into for city notification to residents for emergency situations such as this and other weather-related issues as well. Uh, we're working on solidifying the policy and procedures for the future. Uh, we have trustworthy water testing labs now that are on board and remove the other lab from that testing. Uh, we may implement Polk County Health Department to our list of labs also. Um, I'm also working with Polk County Emergency Management to obtain further FEMA training. I don't think anybody here has had.
What? I'm sorry.
FEMA training, yep. Uh, Federal Emergency Management, yep. Um, this will help us have a well-trained team to handle emergencies in the city of Amory. So we are working very closely with Polk County to make sure that we're on board and doing what we need to do. That's all I have. Any questions?
And so I mean, how expensive it is, but we send our water for testing. Send it to two separate places so we have immediate confirmation of our result right or another.
Uh, well, right now we do, we do send it to a pretty good lab that gives us pretty instant results before we had issues with that. But to send to it's, I don't know if that would be cost prohibitive. I could check with Jeff. I'm not quite sure.
Okay.
Yeah, I can check with him.
But we're testing it here on a regular basis. So I mean, this is just a the, I don't know what the periodic test cycle is, but you know, so we're testing it here and there weren't any issues. So that's
it was cost, cost prohibitive, I think. So.
Okay, thank you.
I have a question on emergency management.
Yep.
Um, since I do have a bunch, a bunch of EM, emergency management training, albeit a couple of years old by now, obviously. But we have a raft of people that are, that are emergency management and far above the level that the, uh, Polk County Emergency Management is as far as the FEMA training. Um, I don't have any problem with, I like the folks that are on that committee, but I don't think any of you are uh, admittedly emergency management trained. And, uh, I think we need to have some stakeholders in that. Uh, Polk County is not God. Uh, Polk County is a valuable resource, but they're not going to come in here and help us at any one time. They're ba- basically the money people in this deal.
Okay.
Having an emergency, eventually it'll get big enough to where the county gets in there. So I would suggest we have lesser city involvement and more people that are trained in the community to, to, uh, be involved with that. Uh, not a reason to reinvent the wheel that I can see, so.
So I guess what we'll do then, Rick, is let's put that on a future agenda. And let's talk about what we need to do in that regard, because this was just kind of an after meeting and it's just things we talked about that we could do better and.
I think the stakeholders, uh, you know, on an emergency management basis are drawing up a plan, the stakeholders need, that are, need to be identified. Um, you know, everybody obviously wants clean water and good water, but there are, there are people that are are businesses that are more dependent on that than others. And of course, we heard about those loudly. And, uh, so I think we need to have some of those folks on board.
Yep.
Yeah, I'm glad that you did. You always call it a postmortem, but
That's what's interesting.
Um, it does help you identify those things that, um, at least where you can do better or actually worked.
Yep.
But I, and what, what we're talking about coming out of this is, is a, you, you're just seeing playing that we can, um, maintain, um, for both, for both this building and for the city, so.
And it's good to have a plan, but you need to make sure you execute it too. So that's
That's a good feature to test it.
If you, I have to make sure it's a good working plan. I agree. All right. All right.
Thanks, Patty.
Thank you.
Chief Fron.
Evening. Um, I start off by August first, which is the first Tuesday in August is National Night Out. Uh, water bill went out, flyer was in there about National Night Out. Come on in, New York Fire Department, please an ambulance service. And there'll be hot dogs, water served by the fire department, also provide water sprinkler off our ladder truck and also have dunk tank for the kids like we do every year. So it's always a good time. Hopefully it's a nice day. Everybody come on out and have some fun. Um, we've had a lot of training on the fire department, which is a good thing. Um, and so, uh, they've been on a lot of training, the firefighters been taking the last couple of months. Mitch, Lou and myself went to Wisconsin State Fire Chiefs Convention in June. Um, there was a presenter there, um, by the name of, uh, Gordon Graham. Gave an outstanding presentation on real management. Um, if you ever get a chance to see Gordon Graham, he is, he is amazing. Um, also, there's a pretty decent class on fire tactics. Um, so yeah, it was, it was pretty good training down at the Chiefs Conference. Um, also Lance O'Brien, Eli Silverman have passed and take, are taken and passed firefighter M class. Lance O'Brien, Mary Corfone have taken and passed pump operator certification class. Josh Wilson has taken and passed certified fire inspection class. We currently have firefighter, five firefighters who have expressed interest in taking entry-level firefighter this fall. Um, we have three firefighters that have expressed interest in taking first responder classes fall. Um, it's just a good to see these firefighters still up, taking the training that we need. It's, it's a really good meal. Um, also, we have grain bin training on Saturday, the twenty-ninth of July, uh, from eight to noon. We have several surrounding fire departments coming as well for the training. The training is being presented by the National Education for Agricultural Safety, um, from Iowa. And that's for gr- grain bins. We got the equipment to, if anybody is in one, we got the equipment. We just need keep refreshing on good training for it. So we got them coming up and oh, yeah, lots of training. So it's a good thing. I'm happy to see it. So, um, other than that, that's all I got. I mean, it's been a while since I've been here, but any questions? Outstanding. Have a good night.
Um, let's see, Heather, can you provide us with the library director's report?
Hi, everyone.
Hello.
So we're in the final weeks of summer reading program. It ends
Say that.
It ends on the thirty-first with a big field day event at North Park. So we're going to draw the winners of the sparkly roller skates and the games and the beach gear. So it'll be a big event. We'll have lawn games, giant oversized games, and just get kids and families to be together. We'll be able to ride our new book bike over there. In our lobby, I don't know if you've seen it, but it's right at this, and we're doing a gaming competition. So Benjamin has a great idea for a book name. The winner will be announced at the field day. So that's really exciting stuff. During the past month, we've held four adult programming events. One of them was a very well-attended Civil War author who talked about a, a local Wisconsin division, and it was letters that were written from a young soldier to his family. Um, so that one was awesome. We've had five storytimes. One of them was at Clubhouse. They asked me to come as part of their Community Helpers series. So that was really fun. And we've had eleven summer reading programs for the kiddos. They've all been really well-attended. We had a total of five hundred and fifty-three people come to our programs in the last thirty days. And a hundred and sixty-five of those were people that came to the Raptor show at Danielson Stadium. That was a huge hit. Everybody loves the Raptors. Um, I'm also really, really excited to share that I've been able to hire an Amory High School alum for our youth services librarian. Her name is Emma Novak. Some of you might know her or her younger brother Frank, who does photography for the school and for the sports now. Believe it or not, she's already finished her degree at UW River Falls, and she wants to be in libraries and she wants to be in Amory. So I'm really excited about that. I've worked with her when she was in high school. She worked with the library for four years when she was in high school. So we know her well. Uh, that's great news. And then I've just finished a draft long-range plan that the library board is going to see next Monday. And we'll have discussion. If they're ready to approve it, then I'll bring that to you all next meeting. Um, which will actually be in September because I'm gone the first two weeks in August. So I don't know when I'll get it to you, but I will. Um, what else? That is it, believe it or not. Any questions?
I mean, you did all that, but we still got done in a couple of minutes?
Yeah, okay.
Love your enthusiasm. It's fantastic.
Yes.
Yep, my business, my business, yes. Since the Director of Public Works isn't here, but I need to fill in a couple of things, the, the bathrooms, the charging stations, those kinds of things are what people are looking for. So could provide to you?
All right.
Any questions for that? By the works. What happened to, to the, uh, list from the, from the parks, Rick? Are we?
I think he's going through the list and they're starting to fix some of the problems from what I've heard. So. This, they're working on, how's that?
Yeah, I, I, I think we should have a report on that, though, next in a month from Jeff and see what, because I don't want that to yeah, well, we are, you know.
It's seven, three hours. I'll let him know.
Dog. That's, yeah. Which is at North Park. They recommend that some placement or some significant repairs, and I agree with some repairs, but I don't see where it would have to be replaced. I don't think it's that far gone. But just little opinion.
I think it was more so some of the slides needed to be replaced specifically and things like that. Maybe not the structure as a whole, but pieces of it that maybe aren't necessarily salvageable in the long run, but would have to be replaced. And I know the slides were one of them that they looked at.
Yeah, okay, good.
There's also some issues with the swings not having straps, like the toddler swing strap to like actually buckle them in has had issues. And so I, yeah, it's not the full structure, but it's definitely needs some repairs.
Thank you. Full discussion, uh, regaining the pickleball courts too, I think.
I know they crack filled them. They were down there last week or the week before.
Good.
It was last week, and they were working on filling the cracks. It might have been the week before. I, everything's kind of
Was, uh, is, uh, uh, float and, uh, the, and, uh, the lifeguard's thing gone from the beach?
I can't answer that question. I haven't been down there in a week and a half or more, and I guess I didn't really, it was on the other side of the bath house while I was down there, so I didn't notice either way.
Were swimming?
No, swimming. No.
There's a schedule for the bath halls to be taken down as well, or just?
Just the lifeguard stand and then the raft. I think they were going to move them to like the sewer gland or something like that so that they were out of
Yep.
eyesight, basically.
Down there, Mike, and the raft will be going around and around and right. Right.
This month has been filled with something new every day. This week I am virtually attending year two of the Clerk Treasures Institute through UW Green Bay, which is actually what I was doing back there. I was finishing up class. Right along today. Um, the institute covers a wide variety of topics that are related to my position today. It was budgeting, accounts and accounts payable were the two classes that I was in. Um, all of the establishments that applied for liquor licenses that were apply, uh, approved in June, they picked up their licenses before the thirtieth. So all of them are ready for the twenty-twenty-three, twenty-twenty-four liquor year. It'll go until the end of next June. We've had a few operators still straggling for some establishments, so they would go into the police department for approval. The software that we got for our meter reading, um, not the reading part of it, but switching it over from our billing to our reading um, device was used for the first time at the end of June, and it worked well, and the whole process went over and things came back. So with that, I was able to send out bills last Wednesday, though we do back on August fifteenth. So everybody remember that August fifteenth for bills due back, and if for some reason you won't be able to pay it, by then you can contact us to set up a payment agreement. And then recycling committee met last week and they discussed a variety of topics. They are talking about things like electronic recycling in to coincide with Polk Counties. They, um, had me put something out for Channel Three to say that we have blue recycling bins behind the fire hall, and the cable company agreed to put that up. I dropped that off last Friday. I don't know if it's out there, not yet. And then they are working on, they have a draft education plan ready, and they're working on kind of finalizing that and how they're going to educate residents about recycling in Amory. All right, any questions? All right.
Thanks, Davis Joe. Um, it's, I am on the agenda is the police chief hiring process discussion, and I can let Patty kick it off a little bit just to give us some background.
Um, well, I've got John Schultz here today. He is former St. Craig County Sheriff. He had been county sheriff for several years, and he owns a consulting firm, and I contacted him to see if he could help us with the process of going through police chief hiring. And he's got a lot of good ideas, and I really appreciate the help that he offered, and he's here to kind of give you an overview of what he's planning, so.
Thanks, Chief. Evening. Thank you, Patty. Um, and as Patty mentioned, I'll just do a brief history, uh, thirty-eight-year-round enforcement career. Ended up being sheriff in St. Craig County. Uh, once I retired, I wasn't smart enough to stay retired, and then Attorney General Brad Shumel got me to come to work for him in his, in his training and standards. There, which that meant I was in charge of Region Five, which is all of Northwest, Northwest Wisconsin. And I oversaw law enforcement training and the requirements that, uh, the Department of Justice through the Training and Standards Board requires of law enforcement agencies as far as record keeping. You know, uh, things like that. So I finally, uh, convinced myself that the check was going to show up at the end of the month, even if I didn't work. So I finally retired all the way and got bored and then started this consulting business. Banded me here. Um, I have done some consulting. I'm looking for chiefs of police for two agents or two municipalities that you're probably familiar with. Uh, Somerset and Roberts I did in the last couple of years. Um, I think we had good success there, uh, at least a lot of those municipalities, um, had some challenges that we were faced, uh, specifically the community and the police department had lost trust in each other. There was just a real animosity there, and we had to try and figure out a way that we could go through a process and try and mend those fences so that the new chief of police had at least a somewhat even playing field, you know, to start off with, and wasn't dealing with a whole bunch of animosity. Uh, obviously, there's always going to be some, and they, he's worked through that very well, but, um, that said, uh, in those many years in law enforcement, I sat on many panels, we hired lots and lots of folks and we would it's a common practice for us to go to our neighboring cities and counties and such and help on their panels to ask questions and screen candidates, right? Um, but one thing that was unique in Somerset, and it worked so well that we used it in Roberts, is that uh, we added a civilian panel as well. And I think what that really helped with was you've got the law enforcement executive panel who is looking at the candidate and saying, yes, he or she actually knows what they're talking about, or no, they don't. They're, they're wading through those things about, you know, we might look at a resume and say, well, it looks like they've got a lot of good training, when in actuality maybe it's not quite what you're looking for. Um, so that law enforcement panel can help you weed through that and, uh, then give recommendations back to the council. What we did with the civilian panel is we took, and we're hoping to do the same thing here, is we'd like a nice cross-section of people from Amory to come in and say, all right, here's our candidates. This is kind of the individual characteristics that we're looking for, both from you, the common counsel. I'd like to ask at some point that you folks, you know, brainstorm and come up with three or four uh, personal characteristics that you would like to see in your next chief of police. And we'll do the same thing with that common counsel. So we get a nice cross-section of, you know, ideas of what kind of a person might be successful for you in, in the next go-around. Once we establish those characteristics, we can formulate questions looking for that individual. Trying to weed through your applicants and see how the individuals are going to fit what you're looking for and what the city's looking for. Once we get through that process, and I can give into a little more detail if you want me to, but once we get through that process and we get a top maybe two or three candidates, I wouldn't recommend any more than three coming before the council. But we'll score them. Each panel will score them. Uh, they are going to, I don't want to let the cat out of the bag, but they're going to have to author a an essay on a particular topic that will be based upon what I'm hearing from you folks and the civilian panel. Um, and then once they get to their interview, there'll be another surprise waiting for them. Besides just their interview, they're going to have to work through a scenario in a very short amount of time, which will help us to demonstrate whether or not, again, they are a seasoned law enforcement individual and can actually work their way through a large-scale incident at a moment's notice. Okay? Once we're, once we're done with that, those folks can come in front of you. You can, you know, you can, uh, shake them out and you can say, we like candidate A, or we like candidates A and B. And at that point is where the requirements from the state kick in. You have to, you have to do a criminal background on your candidate. You know, including a criminal history check, you have to fingerprint them. You know, there's some, just some requirements that the, the Department of Justice through the Training and Standards Boards requires. And we'll get that all done for you, and then if the candidate passes all of those things, you can make a final determination. But, you know, a, a lot of different things being juggled. But I'm hopeful that we can find you a candidate that will fit as many of your needs and as many of your characteristics as we can. You know, we're not going to find Mr. and Mrs. Perfect. They're just not out there, but hopefully we can find a good candidate that's going to be here for some time.
With through this process, a law enforcement panel, civilian panel, a citizen's panel, whatever you want to call it. Um, what's your involvement during the time period?
I'm, I'll coordinate with all of those folks. Um, I, I come up with most of the questions, although I'll take, uh, especially with the, what I'll call the community panel or civilian panel. I just I don't mean necessarily civilian, because hopefully, um, community is a good word. I think one or two members from here will sit on it, so you'll know what the process is. Um, but, um, I'll, I'll be coordinating with all of those folks. When they have meetings, I'll be there. We'll be recording, you know, the things that we come up with as far as the characteristics, then we'll go with the questions. Um, let's take the community panel. Once we find out your candidates that you want to interview, and you folks are going to have to tell me how many folk, how many people you want to interview. Um, we'll set those interviews up. Uh, the individuals will get to see the resume and the, uh, redacted copy of the application, because there's some information on there that we can't share, but we'll delete out what we can't share, and they'll get to see the, uh, the remainder of that application. And that gives them an idea about who these individuals are. Uh, then when that essay comes back in, that'll also be sent to your community council so that they can review and they'll score who they thought had the best essay and, you know, one through however many it is. Um, but again, I, I'll do up all of that. I don't make any decisions unless I don't score. Um, I try to remain as impartial as I can, just trying to guide the process. We can find a candidate that you're looking for.
I really Oh, sorry. It's hard for me to tell because I can't see everyone else, so I don't know if they're talking or not. Um, your process sounds really thorough, and I appreciate you going through it. Um, one of the questions that popped up for me, how do you generally go about choosing who is on that citizen panel? Do you help us make those decisions? How many people is it generally? Can you kind of walk us through that piece of it?
Yeah, um, so I don't pick them because I'll be honest with you. I might know three people in the city of Amory. I visit your Dory Queen more often than I should, but that, it ends there, okay? Um, so I'm hoping that you, as a council or panel, you know, can offer suggestions as a good cross-section of your citizens. You know, and then we can, I would say that you would like maybe five people from the community and one or two members from your council. Again, you need to be careful not to establish a quorum, right? So one or two would be, that keeps you folks involved, and you can let the others know the process or how it worked.
Mm-hmm.
Um, and you're not regarding, you know, you're not relying on me for that interpretation. You're getting it from people you know. Um, does that answer your question?
Yes, thank you.
How much you're involved with that, uh, the community side of it, as far as in the interview process, how much of that? Side of it, as far as in the interview process, how much of that will happen?
Guess I'm not sure. Are you talking about going right into the community and.
Establish this, you know, we've got the reinforcement side and the community, community side.
Yes, sir.
Uh. Much of the interview process with the community side of it.
Oh, that's it. Interview each candidate. Um, the, the, the interview process I look on a particular day is we invite your candidates in. For interviews and they're, they will start with most likely the citizen panel. Okay. And they will go in and they will have, you know, forty five minutes to an hour with that citizen community panel, if you will. And they'll be asking questions. Now, we have to ask the same questions to each candidate, right? Doesn't mean that we can't. A slight or on a follow-up question for clarification, but again, those initial. Questions are the same for each candidate. Um, and those members, they can, we'll, we'll discuss how comfortable they are. I don't mind if we go along the, the table and each takes a question and asks the candidate to come ahead.
Okay.
Get that feel out process. I'll let that, I'll let that, uh, panel. Drive the bus, so to speak. I'll make sure that we're asking the right questions and we're scoring the right. The right way. Again, how that scoring works is you're going to give a candidate. A mark based on each question that is asked and then you total that at the end. So we don't take the raw score, but what we, we've got a preset. Number that if you finish number one with this panel, you're going to get, I'm just gonna draw a number. You're gonna get. Sixty points and if you finish second, you're gonna get forty five points and third, you know.
Sure.
Subsequently, and we'll do the same thing with your essay. And we'll do the same thing with the law enforcement panel and we'll do the same thing with the scenario. So they're gonna have four different areas that where they will be scored. And then they'll all kind of shake out at the end. We total up those. Law points and now we're gonna add up. How they finished and that'll, that'll rank your candidates for you. Does that make sense?
Yes.
That way, it takes that subjective, you know, I like A, so I want that A to go to the top, takes that out of there.
Okay.
So you mentioned the law enforcement, uh, committee. What, what do you envision that to be?
Oh, I'm hoping that, uh, someone from your sheriff's office will sit on it. If not the sheriff, maybe he can assign a command staff. Uh, Patty and I have talked about some chiefs of police. From, uh, St. Croix County that have a little bit larger departments that, um, I've worked with in the past that. We've had good success with. I think they, I think they'll read people quite well. Um, I don't know if they're available or if Patty has, has had a chance to talk to them. I would like to see someone from your police department. Uh, hopefully your officer in charge sit on that. Um, again, we want, we want to be as inclusive as we can without getting so big that we can't wrangle everybody in, right? Um. But if we, and then if we've got, you know, a police chief from, I don't know, St. Croix Falls or Osceola or something like that, that you folks have had an experience with and, and that you work well with. That you trust. I mean, that's great. Well, you know, you can, you can let me know who you would like to, us to try and get on that panel for you.
And are you looking at approximately five to six people on the law enforcement panel?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay.
At what grade is it too large?
Uh, uh, probably on the law enforcement panel, I don't think you need more than five, six at the most. And then in your community panel, we can get a little bit larger with that, you know, six, seven, maybe depending on how many of you that populate it. But you wanna do a nice cross section. If you're, if you're looking going. We don't have anybody from this part of the community, but we'd really like them to be on the panel. Well, we'll. Yes, we'll push in another chair and maybe somebody doesn't get to ask a question. I don't know, but we'll figure it out.
So to develop these, I'll just call it a script, but you have a, you said. Questions that would be asked for each of the candidates. You're gonna have to work with these particularly. Groups to kind of identify the. Work. Work with those groups to identify the questions that they'll be asking.
Absolutely. So, um. I would like at some point, I think I had already mentioned, I would, you talked to you about characteristics that you would be looking for. If you have a specific question. You will have a chance to ask that maybe at the end, when you meet this one or two or three people that. Are going to come before you. Where you can get that final assessment done. Um, but let's say your community panel, for example, I will meet with them to try and get them. To let them know what priorities or what characteristics you have thought, thought about and ask them if there are any. Other characteristics that they think are important. And then we'll talk through that and we'll, they can, they can absolutely help formulate those questions. Um. And we'll put that together, you know, ten, twelve. I, I really haven't seen more than about fifteen questions. If we're asking good, open-ended questions, usually takes a little while for these candidates to answer. So, uh, you know, ten or twelve questions is, is normal. Um, and then the law enforcement panel. You know, I'll ask them for their suggestions too, but I already know what they're gonna tell me, so we'll. We've got a whole, we've got a whole list of, uh, good standard answers and your questions or other that. We're used to asking.
Um, talking about competencies, that's, you, you know, the things that you need to see. That particularly.
In, in the law enforcement, I mean, we're going to ask very pointed questions about law and procedures and such and. I mean, but the questions will be, be on record and made available after the fact. I mean, it's no secret, right? Uh, on, ahead of time it is, because we don't want anybody getting the answers or the questions, um. But yeah, it's, it's very pointed in that, in that regard. And your community panel was searching more for personal characteristics, I think, and.
Yeah, I've been involved in a couple hiring deals where, uh. The, the community panel, for instance, would complete a evaluation. I forget the name of the last one that we did, but it was pretty comprehensive, gave, uh. Like ten or twelve characteristics. Or ability to communicate. Uh, general knowledge, you know, those kinds of things and. Had us rank them in order one to eleven. What's most, you know, what do you think is most important?
Yep.
Uh, and then when the community did that or the, the committee, uh. Then they also, then that same test was given to. The prospective candidate. That said, where are you? You know, you rank yourself according to these one through five or one through ten or eleven. Um, have you ever used that kind of a, now is it copyrighted? Cause I kinda like it. I'll, I'll find out. I, I don't think it is. I don't think it is, but I.
What you're talking about, it makes perfect sense to me. It's a good idea.
And then, and then there's a certain. Rate that says, you know, if you answer, if you're in the. Above, if you're below seventy-five percent, you're probably not, you know, thanks for applying, but we'll see you later, you know? But if you're above seventy or sixty or whatever, whatever the percentile. If you assign to it, then higher the number, the more. Uh, favorable that. That person's attitudes and thought process agrees with the folks that are hiring. I, I can get that.
I appreciate that.
Yeah. I can get that tomorrow as fact, I'm sure.
You're awesome. I'd love, I'd love to see it.
Alright, yeah, it's, I, I don't, you know, isn't totally necessary necessarily, but.
Again, we will, we're, we're trying to do the best process. Instead of doing a boilerplate, that's why I'm asking the questions about what the council. Would like to see and what the community would like to see, so that we can modify our search to look for. The correct individual versus someone to put in the position.
Right. Right.
Okay, so I, I think that our takeaway from this one is that as a council, we need to. Kind of come together to understand what our characteristics and, and. Responsibilities that we think are important and come up with our top three or five or whatever it might be ranked.
Agreed.
Should it, should, not should, would it make sense for us to maybe all come up with a couple on our own and email them? To Patty, so then she can see if we're all kind of in consensus already or is that a bad?
Well, I think that's, that was the, the next point that I was gonna make, so. You, neither, neither we're thinking like, and if you think like me, you should worry. Um, I think that the best thing that we can do is, um, not even as a group, but to Patty, our top two or three. Um, and she can collate those and then look at it and send back, um, rankings and. Based on those, the numbers from one through five or whatever it might be, um, add those up and, okay, there's still too many. Do it again. I think that we'll come to a pretty good. Well, we're selling it. Just to send to Patty the, let's just say we top three. Um, three, um, things that we're looking for in police chief for our department.
You will wait until we get that, until I, if I can get the, uh, copy of that?
Um, I think that that works as a tool to. Work with the responses. I think our responses should just be, what are we looking for in a police chief? So I don't think we need to wait.
Is nice and this is all in the morning and.
You know, thinking like things, how does he, how do you deal with budgets? Those are, those are the kinds of things, so, um. Come on. Send to Patty, your top three characteristics.
Wow.
For a police chief.
Much too.
If I say something next week, maybe you'll do it until the last week away, so tomorrow.
You can have a loose tab. You can have a loose tab into our prison business tomorrow, isn't that?
My money, cause that, that's more thought process than.
I don't think, do you need time to pick out my top three?
You would use it, the rest of us will get Monday, huh?
It's kinda retired.
Yes.
Eric, we do think alike. I think I could have mine in tomorrow.
Yeah, I think, I don't need to think hard about what the top three are, really, I don't. Yep, if you're European, you'll see tomorrow, that means beginning of the day. And if you're American, it's the end of the day, so.
It was Thursday.
And I'll be checking.
They'll be waiting for my phone call, sorry.
Okay.
Okay, so. What's our consensus then by the end of tomorrow or?
By the end of the day. I don't know, the sooner the better. So. Sorry, we drifted away from the presentation, uh, which we tend to want sometimes, Ben. I, I appreciate that you can be able to explain how this is gonna work, um. I think that one thing that can help us, can you explain why? The community or sphere. Can, can help us in this case?
Absolutely, um. And I'll go directly back to, um, not that I would, you know, wanna. Bring up the elephant in the room, but we didn't have a great experience in our last go around. And we've got some trust issues with the community, um. That we need to fix, okay? And in my opinion, after so many years of public service. I've found that the best way to fix it is to be open with the folks about. Process, who's got skin in the game? Are we meeting behind closed doors about everything? No, I mean, let's, we can't change the fact that, and we shouldn't change the fact that you folks are the elected. Representatives of the people and have the final say, right? But we shouldn't be afraid to get input. From our community that says. We'd like to be a part of that process. We'd like to help. We have some ideas that maybe you didn't think about and we're giving folks. That opportunity and I think it'll help to heal. So that, so that folks can say, you know what, this wasn't made in a vacuum. Uh, the process, we, we looked at it and although not perfect. We got a really good shot at, at getting the best candidate. Using this, let's trust it. And I'm hoping that, uh, you know, the citizens from Amory will see that and buy in. And, you know, at least give it a shot, right? That's all we can ask is that they, they look at it and say, we're gonna see how it turns out.
I think that's a really good point, because then. Everybody in the community can feel that they're part of it.
Yeah, I, I, I just, um. Sort of as an advertisement, if, if, um, if asked to be on this panel, please. Please step up and help us out because it's important and. We know that we can't do it alone, so we, we'll take all the help we can get. So, okay. Anything else?
As far as compensation, is there a contractual for? Uh, just for a cookie cutter program or is it depending on your time involved?
Myself, I charge by the hour. Yep, I charge sixty dollars an hour. Don't tell the attorneys that, cause I charge them a lot more when I work for them. Uh, I, I have a soft spot for municipalities and police departments. And that's why I put my price where I put it.
So will Patty be your point person then as to who you're?
Patty will be, uh.
Okay.
And, uh, I, you know, if I hadn't said it, I appreciate the opportunity, at least the consideration to. To help you if, uh, if that's your desire and I hope that it is, cause. It's, it's very important, uh, as you know, this, this particular position. Is someone that, uh, is very visible in your community. We'd like to do the best job that we can to get, get the right person in here for you.
I'd like it to be a relationship to us. That's, that's important.
You know, and that's one of the questions that we should be asking the individual, you know, where do you see yourself in five to even ten years? You know, a lot of these folks. And the ones you're looking for here are gonna be career law enforcement individuals. Why are they applying in Amory? Is it a stepping stone or do they like? Amory and the community and how it looks and, you know, raise their family or whatever here. So.
Okay.
So what you'll need to get from us, um, is I guess. We probably need to vote as to whether we're. Um, take the next step with this, um, and then you would want to know like what our attributes are and then. Approximately how many people we're thinking of getting, that we'd like to have for applicants. Or can you just get a whole bunch of people and then we just roll out?
Application process is open. Take as many applications as you can get and we will go on through. Um, your advertisement is already out there. And it's, it's a well-written advertisement. It's, you know, it's your standard. Um, that you're gonna find from all across the state. I can remember a time when we would advertise for a chief of police and we would get twenty, twenty-five applicants, but that's not the case anymore. Uh, law enforcement applicants in general have gone down.
Mm-hmm.
You know. Peopers, um. In the. In the early and mid two thousands, when we had an opening in St. Croix County, we would get two hundred and fifty applications. You know, and now they'll get forty. For just a patrol position, so, and conversely, you're seeing the same thing in your law enforcement executive. World, you're, you know, where you might have used to get again. Twenty applicants, you're not, you're probably not gonna get that anymore. You're probably gonna end up with more somewhere ten, maybe below. I, I don't know what you have. So we need to do a good job of, of going through that pool. We'd like to see as many apply as we can.
Well, and you had mentioned that you would be able to assist with that. I, I don't know if you have relationships with different. Organizations or groups or whatever that you could, you know, put the word out, hey, I'm, I'm. Doing some recruiting.
Yeah, uh, so Patty was, Patty has advertised in all of the places that I would have recommended.
Good.
If you're looking for a chief of police position in Wisconsin, she's got the ad in the places where you would normally look.
Okay. Great job.
Thank you.
I, I would like to stop short of, uh, trying to recruit an individual since I'm trying to be impartial and, uh. I knew the best candidate of those that apply, um. Well, uh. Make it the best process we can.
Okay, okay. So I think, I think that um what we have to do is, is determine if we wanna go forward with this and.
I think it's an excellent idea, Patty. This done. You get in depth from both sides of way.
I think it would be good if we did.
Maybe, Kayla had a question. Do you have a question, Michaela? Do you have a question?
I did, but I think you're answering it, so.
To help us fill that position. Chief of Police.
Second that.
Okay, motion may be seconded that we move forward with the process as presented in discussion. On favor, say aye. Sorry, Michaela. Thank you, thank you.
Thank you, John. Nice job, Patty.
Okay, police officer, you in PTO discussion, um. One of the, one of the challenges right now is without enough officers, nobody can take time off. And there will be at least one person. Who hit the max, which means they can longer accrue, which is the same as losing personal time off, so. And maybe, you know, instead of penalizing somebody, we're looking for a way to. Suspend that particular um requirement, which tops out is, is it seven twenty? I would like to say that if we do that, we would, we would do it for a specific time period. I don't want it to be. Till things are better, you know, it's something like that, but I'm open to whatever that might be.
Did reach out to our union and I talked to him, um, Gerald is no longer with our union, he has retired. Earl, our, our most recent. He's retired, so, and he's been with the city for quite a while. Um, but there's a new, new rep there and I spoke with him just the other day and asked. I could bring this to council because I think it's important. That everybody knows that it is a stress on the officers and being down officers, they will have to work more. And I don't want them to lose time, especially if they don't, if they can't take the time off and. And they don't, they shouldn't have to give that up, so um. I thought if we went. If we looked at it in January to see, maybe look at it January first to see how many hours. This individual has accrued. And then put something in writing along those lines to make it that it's part of the contract. It's like a. Otis soul or something.
Addendum.
Addendum, yep, yep. So we add that to the actual contract so that he's not.
Careful with hearing the contracts.
Do.
And Chuck is laughing at me because.
And it's, and I.
Goes where I've been.
Um, yep, because I wanna make sure we're doing it correct.
Right, well, I, I wanna make sure we don't cause ourselves problems and I don't mean to be unfair to the police officers either.
So I spoke with their steward and he's fine with that, um, the, the union is fine with that, they, they have no issue with that as long as you are. Um, and I can draft a letter with the help of the steward. And make sure that we get the language correct in there, so nobody misses anything. And then go forward with that for.
Okay, and this is mainly to make sure that. Um, accrue doesn't stop because they've hit the maximum.
And just a yes or no um answer is all that's required. Do we have anybody that would be potentially in that situation?
We've got one officer.
Okay, thank you.
Um, just a clarifying question, Patty, you are saying that we would. Extend through January, so the next six months, or are you saying starting in January?
Well, through the next six months.
Through the next six months, okay.
Yep, yep, and then we look at it as it could end.
Right, and we'll have to look at it as that situation is at the time.
Right.
Hopefully it's improved.
Yep.
That's our, that's our goal.
That's our goal. And we can amend it again if we.
Right.
You know, bring it back and.
Okay, so I would, I would definitely make it for the January.
I think so, that's kind of what I was thinking, so.
Do we need to take action in support of that?
I think you do because then I could start the process and get the letter and then it's in the, in their file, part of their contract. And at least they know that we're trying to work with this individual.
Whether both of these things have to be presented to the full court.
Yes.
Yep.
Yes.
If someone was out there, miss, you know, right now, or soon. Could we buy that out and we could pay them for the additional hours that they may be losing if they didn't care about it?
Oh, that's another topic for the contract, and I think it's a little more. We could amend the contract, I suppose, through negotiations. We'd have to open up negotiations again.
Suggesting the Muslim that is, you know, more impossible. So that nobody uses that in the equation, so.
But I think it should probably be presented to, I'm assuming it's our. Which, uh, which officer it is, but probably should be presented to him as a alternative. That we pay him out for, for those hours that he accrues over seven twenty. Otherwise, it seems like we're just exacerbate. If he's already got seven twenty, that means he's not taking his vacations.
Well, in this, in this case, it's.
Yeah. But I mean.
Oh, I understand.
Seven twenty is. We will have to take what a fair batch before. Or lose a market paid out.
Yeah.
Of officers.
Right, your point is, your point is valid that you just accrue more, right? And it becomes a little bit later, cuz you can't.
You get eight hundred, that's wow, that's twenty weeks, uh, you know.
Yep.
Yeah, I think it makes sense to present both options and see what the officer prefers if everyone's okay with that.
So I will mention the second option to him and see if that works. And bring that to council then when we.
Okay.
Is that something you have to um check with the union on too, Patty, or is that something we can do?
Yes, yes, I will contact the union too.
Okay.
If there's ever a question whether you should, you should. And if, if nothing else, asking at least gives them the opportunity to. Um, have the information rather than just finding out after the fact, even if it's okay, um. It shows respect.
Absolutely.
And I, I've had a really good relationship since I've been here with the union representatives. I think we've tried to. Get it settled as quickly as.
So what is the term of the existing contract, isn't it three years?
Yeah.
Yeah, so we were renegotiating for a couple of years here.
Two.
We're near two, so.
Two.
Got one more year.
Seriously?
Yeah, I know.
I thought with, that we were just in year one.
Council?
Yes.
That we uh present that to the council for consideration depending on. Is uh the response.
Response, okay.
I'll second that motion.
Okay, motion may be seconded that um depending on the response. Um, even to suspend well. Only to buy out to, to, to um extra hours. Um, be sent to the council for approval. Any discussion? Anybody in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed. Okay, motion case. Okay, vacancy discussion, um, so we have. Yeah, mayor vacancy discussion, I had to look to make sure I was on the right line. Um, at this time, the, the position of mayor is open. Um, and also at this time, I have, I'm not proposing any. For that position to appoint. And at this time. We have until April before a um, an election. I don't know if we can go that long. I think there are a lot of things that the mayor does that need to fill that position at some point, but right now I. I think that we have um a lot of things on the plate to take care of. I think that this group as. A working unit doesn't always agree. But we always work things out and I would just assume. At least for the next couple of months, um, police chief and other things that we have before us. Work it out with this group, so I'm just not proposing not to do. Anything, and that doesn't take any action at all at this point, but just so everyone knows. Um, anything that requires um. Action by the mayor is being covered by me. Um, I will take part in any of those. Um, things that come up that to have the mayor's presence or signature or anything else like that. Um. And I think that we need to, again. And see if there's. A good reason to fill the position, um, and how we would go about it. I want this to be um. A thoughtful response, not a reaction. Um, we've. We're ready for the action, so I'm gonna give us a, a beat before we do anything, um, anything that changes um. This working group. And comments.
Under a realistic, we'll know in December whether anyone is interested cuz that's when papers have to be filed, right? If it goes beyond December, then, then I would say we'll have to do something differently, just.
Right, well, and there are a lot of things that. The menu does. And they don't have anything to do with what we do here, um, and it's not just. Being out there as a face in the community, they are things that are coming up that I've got coming. That have to do with um, you know, the workings of, of industry and commerce in the city. Um, looking for. Um, businesses to move in and have things that you can, you can point at one person, that's, that's that entity, but. Well, a month or two, I don't think we're gonna be in difficulty.
Keeping them busy.
Yes, she is.
Good thing you retired.
So I have someone else keeping you busy, so.
Kind of think we need to rush into it, let's, let's see how it plays out and let's just have a, a, a discussion on. You know, on each meeting.
I think so.
Uh, until such, if we have to take action prior to the election, so be it. But if we can handle it as it is. I'm afraid we're, we're less than.
Oh, we'll see how it goes.
It's an excellent idea.
I'm guessing that this has already happened, but I would, uh, the, the. My only concern as far as um things getting missed is to make sure that any. Like committee or council or whatever the mayor would sit on, that, that is gonna be fulfilled and if. You know, you run into problems with that, um, like if you were already a member of X Y Z committee or commission. That, you know, you'll need to backfill.
Yeah.
So. That's obviously.
So far that hasn't been an issue yet, but yes, we're looking, uh, there's, there's a few of those things that could be possible.
Thank you, Eric, for taking all of that on. And being thoughtful about this cuz I know it's a, it's suddenly a lot of extra things on your plate, but I think you'll do a great job.
Um, I accused Sarah as this was being part of her cunning plan. Getting out of the position.
Excellent timing.
Yeah.
For this.
There's luck and there's fortune, right? Okay. Yeah.
We have some. But we do have, they're just starting to enter north uh western Polk County. Um, they do look at the strong ones, we're gonna be heading our way. Earlier I got paged out and our northeastern had a tornado warning up there, but that's all going into Baron and. Um, I've been looking at maybe an hour and we're gonna be getting hit with a severe storm.
So you're saying over long.
Don't wanna get wet.
Yeah, I, I bike for a reason.
I moved in one time and I, I left and it followed me and it was a tornado and it was in luck.
Oh, my goodness.
Right downstairs.
Downstairs.
That's it, then, your other luck.
Okay.
Then with the second hold. So some of us have a little. Also new basement can get home and take care of stuff.
Nothing's tornatic, I mean, right now, but it's severe.
Um, we can, no, I think we can just, if you need to leave, you can. Um, taking an ammunition station for Bird Street boat landing, um. Is a note, um, it's part of the. The ordinance for the county that if a decontamination station exists that. Um, the ordinance says you have to use it, um, at the Apple River Protection Rehabilitation District is asking for permission. To put one at the Bird Street landing. And what it uses um. Um, signage with um explanation what to do, it has some tools, you know, a grabber for. And a scrub brush and, and a spray with a mild bleach solution and um besides. Permission for police for uh, they would also like to have a place, is there a spot that they can put it there? As that's. It's, I don't know where the city property stops, but it's, it's right up against um Ron Anderson's.
Has to be at least, what, sixty-six feet right away?
Yes.
So. No, that's total, it's thirty-three, thirty-three feet from the center, so I, I roughly. So I don't think we have an issue with the, there's, the dock is on the south side of that, I access. I don't think there's an issue.
There's a few lines there already.
Yeah, it has to be close enough so that they can actually use it.
Right, right.
Yeah.
Yeah, there's, if you, if you wanna see when this ring at the. Black book landing on the apple.
It was ringing at uh, on Pike Lake too, I don't know if that's still there.
I don't. Yeah, there's stations to check, but this is a little, this is a different um situation, this has actually got. Equipment.
Yeah.
I think if you ever likes it, I'm gonna have it, I know.
Yeah, like those.
I think those do have one. Yeah, yeah. It's just one more thing that. Just sounds inevitable.
I would like to make a, a motion to uh encourage the Apple River. Uh, Protection District to establish that boat cleaning and decontamination station.
Yeah, is there a second?
A second.
Motion may be seconded to approve the request from the Apple River Protection Rehabilitation District. Decontamination station for the Bird Street boat landing, on favor, say aye. Opposed. Until now because we had on Saturday, it's on the budget for.
It's just something that should put, uh, potentially be looked into, um, not just the river, but the uh.
Well, I don't know what the lake association is looking at, but it. You know, they, they've gotten the same information from the county that, that, that we did, so I hope so.
They, they had, the lake association, I don't know, was it last year, the year before, they had a, a person stationed.
Yes.
At the lake on the weekends.
Yeah, and the one, the only thing that changes with this one is that if the equipment is there by ordinance, you are required to use it.
Yeah.
And it's enforced by county.
And yeah, at Yellow Lake at the excess and uh, there's actually. Uh, I suppose it's a electric eye or something when you back up there.
Yep.
Electric eye comes out with a message and says you are required by law to. Do this, so.
Yeah, it's I think it said that there's some. Some of the links that have um can that you can be. Find. By by the law of control.
And they have stanchion, right?
Yep. Okay, number six, ordinance zero three twenty twenty three. And this is um horse personnel committee. Establishment of.
So is this essentially what we had before?
Very much.
You pulled them back out very, very much similar, yep. Um I would um. I think that. The term should be um longer than one year. If you're gonna have three people on it, it should be rotating, so I actually think it would should be more of a. Um even even two years, so you always have somebody. On that will have been there for two years. I'm thinking two years because of the mayor. Unless we do it three years and then have. You know, there'd be a little bit of overlap, but I think that it should be longer than one year because by the time you figure it out, you gotta.
Just a separate one, two and three.
Let's face it, you aren't gonna be very much used because you don't know what's going on. So one, two, or three, it would be a.
And just to note, it um. It's not every month.
No.
It's as needs.
Right.
Right.
And all the job placements now for that would all go through the personnel committee at some time.
Um. Employee issues, grievances, union contracts and changes or updates to the personnel policies. So not they don't mention higher. It's just. Keep that issues.
Mm-hmm. Yep.
Um. I would probably amend that to say department heads um.
I agree. Yeah, I agree with department heads um.
Have to go through the personnel committee.
Yeah, yeah, I would agree with that. Not, you know, uh. Other staff, but department heads, I think would be good.
Right, and I think that would accomplish the layer.
Yeah.
That we were that we were trying to do with this. I think that's.
Well, I like it because it gives it lends a little more informal setting to a question and answer time. Um maybe. It's typically not as well attended as uh as our. Uh. Council meetings and so on and so forth and um maybe it was a little more relaxed to be able to ask questions that. That uh. You know. It's just it's just a good way. And if you got a good recommendation from three council people. And and.
Yeah.
And the mayor is a member. Um by route, I would recommend personally that the mayor not be a voting member of that. Although the interim mayor might be able to do that. You know what I mean?
I would need to be a tiebreaker.
You know, the mayor is always a always a. What do you call it? A pro pro town uh member of every committee.
Right.
Regardless, he doesn't necessarily have to be there, but. Uh in cases of, well, yeah, with three committee, three members in committee, you won't have any ties, but uh. But uh. And so you gotta bully pulpit, that's all you make it happen.
So I'll add in their hiring of department heads.
I I think so. Most of the time we've promoted, I mean. The last no number of years is the department heads have been promoted from within the group. And I don't have an issue at all with that. I think we've got really good people, but. When it goes through committee, it's just uh. Yep.
Okay. Till those changes.
Um I'd be, I would make an emotion to um. Forward onto full council, the boards and commissions. Uh chapter fourteen fourteen dot one three for the personnel committee with the changes that were indicated, looking looks as though it's ordinance number zero three dash two zero two three.
Second.
Motion made and seconded to forward. As amended, ordinance number Z three twenty twenty three to council. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
So I mean again. Opposed. Let's see, wait, do you have two votes now, Michael?
Well, there's two of us on the screen, so maybe.
The next one is ordinance zero four twenty twenty-three amendments to ethics board ordinance. We're speaking to this one.
Could probably say something um.
Where did it come from?
This came from our attorneys.
Okay, that's.
Yep, and it was because I last ethics ordinance didn't cover everything. As as we well know.
Hmm.
Um. One thing I did notice in this ordinance, though, that I think. And I took it from Osceola because I think it's important to include protection for the employee. And I can send that over to everybody before we make any improvements on that, but I just kind of discovered that today. Um it kind of covers it by state law where the whistleblowers are not. In trouble for coming forward. And I think that's important.
Even if it's even if it's covered by Wisconsin some statutes, it wouldn't hurt to mention it.
Mention it, correct.
And refer to the statute.
I think I'd like to re- just.
Yeah, exactly.
Take a month to.
Yeah, yeah.
Inside quickly is that uh on page two, uh parent five, it said. Ethics Board shall make sufficient alterations and I alterations is not an allowable thing. It. Redactions, they can redact things, you know, black it out, but you can't change alterations, so.
Yeah.
That's that's sworn testimony.
I'm not gonna make you get this back to me by tomorrow.
Okay.
Patty, can you send a copy of it to me?
Yeah, I can do that.
Thank you.
I did um it helps if you. Print out the current one.
Yep.
And have this one side by side because because there's a lot. But what it is is a lot of um it's a lot of clarification that was missing in the previous ordinance. Um so I think it's best that we don't take action on this.
Either give it some time and and digest it.
You could tell it was done by an attorney, you know, the old one was two pages, this was. Well.
No, it's good, though, I mean, to make sure.
I did, I I still would like more time to digest that.
Oh, anyway, we can table that.
Okay. Um sitting in billboard discussion, which is brought forward from. Two months ago. I think you wouldn't hear one of them.
That's. Um. So that. That is something that I had requested to be put on here because we have this question um. Frequently, um where are our billboards and who's in charge of the billboards and. Do we have any money to put towards the billboards? Um I would like to have for us. Prepared and ready um for budget time um. Anything and everything we have about the billboards, where they're placed, um what condition they're in um. I would like to know approximate cost to redo a billboard rapid. Um are there any repairs that are necessary, that type of thing? Because I think it's. Super important to um be noticed. And um the one that uh there is one on highway that's in terrible condition and it does not.
Which one is that?
I fixed it. I I've already wrapped it and I've already.
I was gonna say, it looked pretty weird.
I had the guys trim it all up and. We had money in our tourism budget, so I.
I think we, okay, never mind. More important because, you know, we lost a billboard down on down at Four Corners. Um so should we, is that something that we should consider replacing? Um. What sort of money is in the budget for doing that? Um is that something that we would perhaps want to be. Sharing funds with um the community club as an example, because we hear from business owners frequently. That um you know, I wish something was a little bit more generic, directing people to our beautiful town. Um so I think it's something that is. Of concern that we need to look at and um you know, like any other. Improvements, I think we need to look at that as well. Um. And it's harder to keep them in the forefront of our mind because we're not looking at them every day.
Say that on every day and I'm just, I said.
Yeah, said that, Patty, kudos to you, cuz that that looks, I I noticed it, I noticed it, right?
So I had the guys clean it all up so you can see it and it's not lit, though, that's the one.
It's not what? It's not lit, no.
No, it's next. And I I think that this needs to be, you know, something that we review annually. You know, have a have a plan. To me, it should be part of our advertising budget. Um so I want that to to be noted and addressed.
You know, one thing I thought about several years ago, maybe comment about it, but it never went any place that I'm aware of, but. Um. Lot, you know, you get on a lot, lot of highways, not just ninety-four or anything. You can come up to an exit. And here's a sign that says Amory and then four or five, if you want your name on there as far as. Uh places to eat. Gasoline, diesel fuel uh and lodging are typically the ones that are on there. Um and I, somebody said that that has to be approved by the state.
State thing, yep.
But I wonder if if, I mean, do we, are we a a candidate for that or could we be?
Um I think it's, it depends on the frequency of the traffic on the highway and it's it's.
Is it distance related?
Yeah, distance related.
Uh even even if it says, you know. You know, I mean, typically there's about three signs, one one for lodging, one for food and one for fuel. And uh and then a sign that says, you know, five miles, this is where you, this is where you can go. Um.
Can look into it.
Yeah, I I think. I think that would be appropriate, especially eastbound. Highway eight. And I'll probably westbound too, but eastbound especially because our bulk of our traffic seems to come from, you know, the cities.
Well, and and that's the thing, I, you know, I when when we're designing a billboard, obviously, I haven't, I haven't seen it. Um, you know, to make sure.
It's the same thing.
But it says direction to go and how far it is. That's. Important and I think, you know, as long as it's, you know, in close proximity, that's perfect.
And I called the state and he goes, are you Bjorkland? And I go, yeah. He goes, I know your husband's cousin. He used to work here and.
Oh, gosh.
He said, yeah, we'll let that go. He said it's, but he said it's because it's grandfathered. Well, that was nice because it was. It was grandfathered in, so that was, that's good. And sometimes if you're gonna change it.
Yeah, it comes in. We still pay twenty-five dollars a year for that sign, I think, right? Yeah, super. Um last time we went through that, there was a whole hive of wheel, but. Well, that that's it's on not on land and this this county won't let us have it. And I said, but only because I sat in a meeting where we talked about that and. We rented it and the state said, yep, it's okay because it's far enough away, so. Good.
Now we're gonna take that thing down.
Yeah, you can't put it back up, right?
Remember having that conversation this spring or just after the first year and nothing ever happened with it, so.
Yeah. They keep turning the tail.
Just couldn't stand looking at it anymore.
South of four. And then there, then there's one also south of the Four Corners too. Yeah.
Those two.
South down my age, is that where that goes?
That's before that, isn't it?
Okay, yeah, there used to be. Maybe it was just Chad Johnson's had a had a sign of.
That was one by A A, right, County Road A.
Yep.
South of. Strokes of the round Four Corners.
Yeah.
Yep.
I never go that way. And then see, that's the only one we have.
Yeah.
South of town. And it's older. Yeah, it's got a sailboat on it. We don't have sailboats here. Sorry, I'll say it again.
Have a especially mediaable community club need to redo that one. Because we have set aside some money. Um to put towards redoing because we've been getting um so much feedback from our membership wanting. Billboards redone, so we did set aside some money in our budget this year, so if that's something that we can look into. Putting away towards that one, we would be opening to that.
And we can do this.
Money, money.
Absolutely. And we put apparently we put LG to sleep.
He is sleeping.
Yeah, he he passed out. He's he.
Sounds like a good O B to me.
Make a motion to adjourn.
Ah, should be me to it.
Anybody in favor? Thank you and.
Good night.